Good afternoon. I hereby call this a general review meeting of the NACDO's ISD Board of Trustees. Let the record show that a quorum is present and notice this meeting was illegally posted in accordance with the Texas Overmeade Act. Board members, James, Vice President James Mottori is a little bit late. He's out reading to a group of students. He'll be here in just a minute. And Board Member James Irwin is late. I'd like to remind everyone that all items on the agenda today are for discussion only and no action we take into this meeting. Please join us and turn off your cell phone to silent mode. Public come in. Thank you for your interest in NACDO's ISD. We have set aside this portion of the meeting to receive input from the public regarding items on the posted agenda. This is our transition plan in keeping with newly adopted House Bill 2840. Each person designed to speak must have already completed submitted the proper public comments form. At this time, we do not have any one registered to speak. Would we now go to the consenting agenda? We will first discuss items from the consenting agenda at this time. Board, any items on the consenting agenda that you would like to discuss? Thank you, Board. We'll go to Ms. Barbara for our business office reports. Ms. Barbara?
Good afternoon, President Neal, Board Members, Interim Superintendent Fraley. I'd like to begin with the budget amendments. The first budget amendment, A, is for the police radio system that was approved and ordered in prior year. We received a portion of the product in prior year. And then we received the rest of it this year. So I need to pull out the part that we hadn't paid for yet out of fund balance and put it back in to pay for the radio system. Budget Amendment B, in our adopted budget, we budgeted to purchase seven vehicles, white fleet vehicles. And not knowing the cost, I just put forty thousand in each of the different functions that were going to be replaced. Well, now that we know, which will be presented later, I need to move funds around to get it into the correct accounts. Budget Amendment C is athletic playoff games, budgeting the revenue and then the associated expenses. And budget item D is for donations for athletics and convocation. Budget item E, BQJ has two counselors. They chose to forego one for a social worker. But I never did make that change in the budget, so I'm doing that now. Budget F is for, we have, we've never done this before, but we have several teachers that are also coaches. And some of them are special ed or CTE, and we have to track those expenses very carefully. And so they, they were being charged like one hundred percent to special ed when they're actually coaching, they have coaching duties part of the day. So that I am capturing those coaching duties and putting them into athletics rather than instruction. Item G, we are purchasing a new RTI software platform for English language learners. And so we are taking a portion of what we need from function twenty-one, which is instructional leadership, and putting it into function eleven. Any questions on those budget amendments?
Oh, are there any questions, Ms.?
Mr. Fraley, I think that this is probably would be more apt, I'm not sure if this is at least a question or a vote for you, but I know when we host those playoff games, I'm just curious. I assume that we've got some costs associated to having those playoff games there. Is that kind of a break even proposition for us or do we come out on top?
It could vary depending upon the gate receipts. But at any cost, at any rate, we don't lose money on it. Just how much we make would depend upon the gate receipts and the difference between our cost and what the gate receipts.
All right. And the, for example, on security, if our officers are out there, is that's taken care of?
That is charged to the, to the, using our facility.
All right, great. Well, I love having it and I think it's great for our community. And I know even if it's a break even for the district, it's good for the community because hopefully those folks are eating out.
Buying gas, yes ma'am.
Buying gas and spending some money here, but.
We're hosting a game this Friday, I believe, football this Friday.
Fantastic.
We had Zan Alvestein versus Garrison last Friday.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fraley, I think actually we probably have some income coming because we rent the facility as well.
Correct, correct.
And I think we still have concession stands too, so those organizations would still?
I think we still do get the concession stand revenue, yes, yes ma'am.
I know that the boosters definitely profit from it as well, I would, I would think for the concession standpoint, but wasn't sure how the security was handled, was kind of curious, and somebody had asked me about that, so appreciate, appreciate that, knowing that.
We use our folks and they're paying, and we take what we pay them from the receipts or from the rental costs. And get ready because already with our softball and baseball facilities, folks are ready to come.
Fantastic. Well, in fact, that was, part of the discussion was that there was, there's a lot of excitement, particularly on those two facilities, and anticipation that they'll be, they'll be used quite a bit.
And the new tennis courts are, are done, well, not new, they've been renovated.
Resurfaced, all right. Sorry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Board, I also would like to just make a comment on the donations from our community, for convocation and others. We really appreciate the partnership from our community. Thanking our community for their complete support of NACDO's ISD. Thank you. And I'm gonna make this come in on behalf of James Mottori, our social worker, board member, on the social workers, and after hiring another social worker, he would be excited about that. It makes a difference. And thank you, social, our social work department, for your work you do and you're doing, and then looking forward to that. And finally, with the RTI, the software, the focus on instruction. Thank you. And that's what we're about, instruction for our students. So thank you.
This is going to allow us to really analyze and merge resources and better have a better grasp of who our students are. And it has some growth potential for maybe even incorporating special ed perhaps somewhere down the line. We're excited about this software.
Yes, and that software is actually more expensive than what was noted, but that's all we needed from twenty-one to four.
Thank you. Board, any other comments? Okay. Ms. Barbara, donations under twenty-five hundred?
We have several donations under twenty-five hundred, two hundred of which is to general fund and five thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars is to principal activity. You have the listing in front of you, which is quite extensive. Do you have any questions on the donations?
Sixteen laptops donated to the high school. That's, was that a grant or a, just a, do we, that's fantastic. So that's a.
Thank you. We'll, we'll get Dr. Crespo when he comes, excuse me. He will touch base on that when he come up.
Because I, I think Dr. Crespo isn't a part of what we're from, approximately learning. You know, so these are the ones where they provide the online instruction.
Thank you. Board, any other comments? Ms. Barbara, investment report?
Investment reports, there's just regular invest, income earned. And a few, we have one certificate of deposit that. Blink on what? The word I'm trying to say. Reached its deadline. And, and anyway, the month ended and we have since reinvested that, those funds.
Thank you. Ms. Long is for business reports, please.
And I'm just open to any other questions on all the other items.
Board, any other comments? Well, now moving on to purchases over twenty-five thousand. Dr. Crespo, you want to comment as antithesis on a particular item?
Good afternoon, President Neal, Board Members, Interim Superintendent Mr. Fraley. This is on page ninety-one of your binder. McDojust High School is requesting to purchase one hundred and twenty-five Chromebooks licenses, white glove service, and three Chromebook carts. We were lucky that there were two additional carts in the warehouse from previous purchases from the junior high that had a little bit of damage to them, but we were fine with them. Save us a little bit of money there. This will help increase student access to technology in order to create enhanced engaging learning experiences for all students. We currently have five computer labs and four carts. And out of those five labs, we have two of them that are being utilized for credit recovery. We have two of the carts that are being used for proximity in classes. And then we also, a lot of our AP classes use the labs on a regular basis. We also have a new AP computer science class that uses one of the labs during the day. So we, we have some items on campus, but we don't have enough. We have too many kids that need access to technology, and this is the reason that we're asking for this. The budget impact will be thirty-four thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents, and they will come from language arts, math, science, social studies, and foreign language. So we had spread that out in the beginning with the budget, so they, everybody would have equal access to those, to those devices. Administrative recommendation is the board approve the purchase of one hundred and twenty-five Chromebooks and three Chromebook carts licenses and white glove service for student use. Purchase will be made from CDWG for thirty-four thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. Questions?
Yes, please, Ms. Fraley, go ahead.
So we went through those numbers pretty quick on the labs. How many actual Chromebooks do you have now that can be like checked out to classrooms? You sound like two of them are, two of them are dedicated to proximity.
Correct. So we have two, two carts.
That leaves two for your whole campus that teachers can check out.
And three labs.
Oh, wow.
That we can actually ask for. And even those three labs throughout the day, different periods, AP classes are taking them because that's the new initiative with college board and AP. They're, they're on the computers in the lab, so they're, they're reserved for AP classes. I know first and second period, first, second, and third AP seminars is in there every day. Seventh period, computer science is in there every day. So we have a lot of use, we have a lot of need, and this would also help. Because a lot of times, yeah, we allow students to bring their personal devices to school for that reason. But unfortunately, they, they do not utilize those devices well during the day, and it's better if we can get a cart and have the kids actually do the programs that we're trying, trying to get them to use instead of having them on their own phones looking at the things that they shouldn't be looking at. We'd rather have that available for them on a constant basis. And we have one lab in the ninth grade building that houses five hundred students. So one lab for five hundred kids is really hard to, to work with, but this will allow.
This is just a drop in the bucket to what you really need.
Yes, ma'am.
It sounds like, because that's, I mean, when you talk about the number of students you've got on campus, that's just really limiting the teacher's ability to put technology in these students' hands.
Correct. And that is definitely one of our campus improvement plan goals, is to increase the use of technology in the classrooms. And it's hard to do when they're being utilized for other things at this time, so this will definitely help our teachers have access to those devices.
Well, thank you for bringing this need to our attention.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Board members, any other, any other questions, comments? Board members, any other, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Crespo. Appreciate your work. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is submission of class size waiver. Dr. Hill?
Good afternoon, board members, President Neal, interim superintendent Fraley. Thank you very much for the opportunity to visit with you all about class size waivers. You know, we came to you in September and asked for some class size waivers. There are some of those that are no longer needed and those are listed on your action sheet in your board book. The one for Nettie is no longer needed in kindergarten. So today what I'm bringing forward to you, and you will see noted in the purple tab, is an updated elementary enrollment. So since your action sheet from last week, there has been an additional one and it's an additional third grade classroom at Regay. So this particular waiver would be seeking for two kindergarten for BQJ and one third grade classroom at Regay.
Board, any comments? Go ahead, please.
I'd be remiss, I'm going to get on my soapbox and I know you guys are doing the best you can, but I really, my dream is to see these class sizes go down.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a lot, especially in elementary school teachers. That many kids in a room, I know how much of a struggle it is and I know you do too.
Yes, ma'am.
But I just have to, I know it's on our wish list, but I want to keep it forefront that we've, we've, we've got to address that.
I agree 100%. It's just a matter of finding quality staff and having the physical space.
I understand.
Is a big challenge, but this is certainly something that we're on the same page about.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And thank you all for monitoring Dr. Hill closely as students come in and out to maintain them 22 to 1.
Absolutely. And if I may say one more thing about class size waivers, when we submitted these in September, we submit them through our TEA system for TEA and we receive whether they have been accepted or denied, if you will. And I will let you know that the three that we requested in September for Fredonia were denied primarily because of their accountability rating. And so Dr. Corley got on the phone and talked with TEA because what we wanted to explain to them is yes, we are of the utmost concern, but B, we are truly, there's no more classrooms at Fredonia. So even if we wanted to open up an additional classroom, we, we physically could not. And so we went back and looked at the, this was particularly for first grade. And so I had worked closely with the PMS and had them submit a, or give me a report of the entry and withdrawal dates of the students in first grade and all with the exception of one came in after the first day of school. And so the second tier I looked at is the number of transfers that we accepted and the ones that we accepted for all employee children. And so I work very closely with the principals and talk to them about what's the best thing for these students. And so in our transfer regulations, we do have the ability to, you know, remove those students who were transfers. Of course, we wouldn't want to do that to employees, but the other students. But we, we're all on the same page of if they've been there since the beginning of the year, we would really like for them to stay where they are. So in working with Mrs. Barbrick and Mr. Whitaker and Mrs. Weebold, of course, hiring an additional first grade aide for Fredonia, so at least that way we would, you know, lower the adult to student ratio. And so there will be two aides that we will hire. I think she already has one, but then we will hire another one. And in visiting with Ms. Weebold, we believe we have some potential candidates that may even graduate in next month that we could bring on board.
I appreciate you, you.
Yes, ma'am.
Steering additional aides to those classrooms.
Yes, ma'am.
For sure.
And in visiting with Mrs. Wells this morning, she's going to be with her leadership team on Wednesday and I told her to get back with her Wednesday if they came up with a plan that needed to.
Because Regay is kind of in that same situation as far as classroom space, correct? Do they have any unused classrooms?
I, I'm not, I didn't ask that question, I'm sorry.
They're pretty tight over there. They're very tight.
Yeah, it's pretty tight over there as well, I'm, I'm sure, so.
Thank you for the presentation. The highlighting really gets to the nuts and bolts. I still looked at everything, but I know this is where the problem.
That is PMS and Ms. McGalpin. She does a wonderful job. She sends this to us first thing every Monday morning and, and we're very appreciative of that. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
We should also thank TEA for working with us also for Fredonia.
That's great.
They really work with us.
Thank you, board. Any other comments? Next item on the agenda is item E. Cast votes for candidates for Nakadoches County Central Appraisal District Directors for January 20th, December 20, 21 term of office. Board, as you remember at the September board meeting, we approved a resolution nominating Mrs. Pam Fitch and Mr. James Mottori to be listed on the official ballot to serve on the county appraisal district for two-year term, 2020, 2021. And they both agreed to serve and what Mr. Wills would do, there are 1,900 votes, recommendations to split the votes between the two. Their role and responsibility is tremendous and, Ms. Fitch, I'm just going to ask you, will you talk a little bit about your role on that board just for a second?
Well, it is, it's a, I think there's five of us, I believe, on that board representing the different taxing entities. Nakadoches School District is the, the largest taxing entity, so we've got two seats on the board. The city has one seat, the county has a seat and then the surrounding school districts, the smaller rural school districts have a, have a representative seat as well. And it is a, a very, very crucial job that the appraisal district has and that it's collecting the tax funds and distributing them out to the taxing entities. And probably one of the more challenging issues is the, the state does, the appraised values of, of properties in Nakadoches falls under the chief appraiser's responsibilities, but the state looks at that annually to ensure that we are maintaining our appraised values to their expected level. And so I think that continues to be a little bit of a challenge with the, with the state verifying that, that we are keeping values where they feel like they should be. So I, I know Ms. Barbrick deals with that annually. As they, I guess, audits those appraised values and, and make those decisions, so.
Ms. Fitch, thank you. We appreciate your service and the commitment and looking forward to another two years, two years. Thank you very much. Expect, respect curriculum is the next item. So Dr. Young, thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon, President Neal, board members, interim superintendent Fraley. This, I'm bringing this to you for this, from the SHAC program that we have. And of course, we're charged with making recommendations that speak to the whole school, the whole community and the whole child approach to health and learning. Through the introduction of bills such as Senate Bill 435, Senate Bill 11 and House Bill 18, all these bills target different components of mental health prevention and intervention, safety and healthy school environments, conflict resolution and violence prevention. Expect, Respect is an evidence-based, comprehensive, school-based program designed to promote safe and healthy team relationships. These materials are designed to support youth in changing social norms as well as increasing bystander interventions and individual skills for healthy relationships. And so I want to be real specific and let you know, this is not sex ed. This is character and behavior building. The program targets young people who have experienced any form of violence or abuse or involved in unhealthy peer or dating relationships, have difficulty managing anger, are involved in bullying or sexual harassment, worrying about making their partner or friends angry or jealous, use alcohol or drugs, are pregnant or parenting, or appear socially isolated from peers. Program topics include harassment, abuse, unhealthy relationships, anger management and conflict management. And I brought the lead social workers here to answer any questions that you have specifically. The curriculum is related to the TECS and it is what we're expected to be teaching our children. Do you have any questions?
Board, any questions?
So this is a, a, a program that we would actually, the proposals to implement campus in all of our campuses?
The upper level.
Upper level.
Secondary.
Secondary.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And our, our social workers would be the ones that would be trained in the program?
Social workers, our nurses, LSSPs, LCP, LPCs, several of the student support, the majority of the student support services staff.
All right.
As we are waiting, a social worker, do you mind just come in and talk a little bit about, he was an experienced social worker and I know this by middle school students and it's a critical area for us and do you mind just talking to the board just a little bit about the benefits you see in this program as we move forward? Thank you, ladies, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ruby Ramon and this is Lauren Seija. So there is actually a component for third through fifth graders that is the same materials. The biggest component of, there's three components to this program, the biggest of which is, or I think the one that would make the greatest impact would be the one that is on a referral basis. And so any student who is experiencing any kind, who has ever been hurt by violence or any kind of abuse, anyone who's in an unhealthy relationship, whether that's with a peer or in a romantic relationship, if they have difficulty managing anger, have been involved in bullying, either as the person that was doing the bullying or the person on the unfortunate receiving end of that, sexual harassment as well, students who are pregnant or teen parents, use alcohol or drugs or are socially isolated. And so this program would teach a diverse, diverse topics, but it would, it would show students how to identify the violence in their lives and then how to proceed from there and teach them that their past is not their, like their whole life, that's just one aspect of their life. And so it would teach them coping skills, coping mechanisms. It would teach them how to interact with their family if the violence is coming from the family. It would teach them just how to identify it and how to receive services. But a lot of like the managing the anger is a huge component, conflict resolution. So that's one aspect of it. These are the, these would be groups that we would do for the high school, for secondary, I should say, there's 24 sessions, 45 minutes, one a week. And then for elementary, third through fifth, there's 16 sessions and the material is great appropriate. Like Dr. Young said, it's not sex ed. We're talking about how to handle relationships in your life and that's, you know, your peers, your parents, your community members, everyone, including romantic relationships. The second component is a leadership training. And so this would be, I think it's an eight, I'm trying to count in front of me. There's eight topics and we do this tra, this is for any student, secondary student. So anybody, everybody would be getting this eight training topic. And from there, we would develop leadership committees of students that were interested in, in this program. And they would then identify a problem within their campus or their community as a whole and then they would develop whatever program they wanted. It could be a theater work, it could be a campaign, it could be a speaking event, a poetry night, it could be whatever they came up with to target that intervent, to target that problem. And then there's a third component to the program, which this one is free even if we choose not to purchase this, which I'm going to say, we're going to choose to purchase this. This is a free program where teachers can access training, a training video. It's a two-hour program and so they would do the training and then they have three lessons that they can do with their students. And so this is something that specifically targets harassment and any teacher could do this. And if you want to hear some of the topics that are taught, we can discuss those as well.
Sounds like a, a very exciting program to, to bring into the district. It's very encouraging. And, and the SHAC has reviewed this and said, yes, we like this. Please bring it forward to the, to the board.
And a 12, 0 vote, yes, ma'am.
There you go.
And thank you all for your work, our social workers. I'm hoping Ruby that somewhere near the end of the year, maybe you can come back and give us an update, provide a report on the progress.
I have a question. It only looks like you have one manual for this program. Is that going to be enough?
We get the digital access, unlimited digital access to it with the purchase.
Okay.
We get one physical manual.
But, but on every campus, there's access to this material for any, anybody who'd be involved.
So the training, this, when you look at the budget on there, on, I don't know, I think it's like one page, 110 or something like that. That also includes a training and that training is for up to 60 people. So what we would like to do is pilot it this spring among the social workers and then actually get the training, because Lauren's actually done this program before in Austin. And so she's familiar with it. And we would like to collect data to present that to you all. And then we would like to have the training when we have a clear understanding of who all could be involved. And this is going to be dependent on every principal on every campus because they're going to know where it's going to work best. So whereas Regay might have a 50-minute PE class, another campus does not have a 15-minute class. And so it would just be dependent on every, we would be talking to the principals, asking them who they wanted to be trained. And these could be actually the people that would be offering the, the courses or maybe there's going to be changes, but we have an ability to train up to 50, 60 people with this fee.
And the hope is that with last year's recommendation from the SHAC, that we bring back health curriculum, that this would be one area that we would just roll right into this. Of course, it's all dependent on master schedules on campuses and who's assigned, you know, to teach that health curriculum if the board so chooses to bring that back. So we're, that's why we're going to pilot, we would like to pilot this program next semester, see what it looks like, what the involvement is and then, and then go further.
So would it be correct to say that you're kind of looking at, at like piloting this in the secondary campuses in the spring? Take a look at it if you like it, if it seems to be effective, potentially roll it out and, and go down to third grade next year or just not?
We are hoping to pilot it also at a few elementary campuses as well. The T-Tip social workers have, are interested in doing this on their campuses as well.
Excellent.
So it's, it's going to be what it looks like it's going to be is the McMichael feeder pattern and then the high school in Malcolm is where we would be doing. It's not going to be all the high school and every single campus, every single class, but we're going to pilot at each level.
And try to target high needs areas, I would say, high needs classes. All right.
Thank you all, thank you, Dr. Young and thank you, staff. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you for the opportunity.
The next item is item G. Reschedule the January agenda review and regular board meeting. Ms. Fraley?
Sir, President Neal. Board members, you have the normal rotation of a board meeting being January 16th with the works, the general review being the 13th. Staff returns from holidays on the January 6th, so we were asking for a little more time to prepare for the meeting. So our proposal is to move the regular meeting to January 23rd, Thursday, and we would have the general review on that Friday, the 17th, because the Monday is MLK Junior holiday.
Thank you.
Give us more time to prepare for it, more time for you to review.
Board, any comments or questions? Does that fit your schedule that allow the staff more time administration?
Looks good to me.
Thank you, Mr. Fraley.
Thank you all.
Board, we're moving to discussion and action agenda items that we will discuss at this time. The first one is consider approval of guaranteed maximum price amendment number one to contract with WRAL general contractors. So we'll turn that over to Mr. Fraley at this time.
Thank you, President Neal. As we're looking at pricing on our projects, we noticed a trend here in Nakadoches with the district, the university, or the parts of the state where some of the. the district, the university, and the parts of the state where some of the funds allocated are coming in somewhat a little deficient in terms of what we're getting on preliminary pricing. And so what we wanna do is bundle our three capstone projects, the Carpenter rebuild, the McMichael renovation, and the CTE build into one big GMP so that the funds can fluctuate between one or the other depending upon how the, how the bids come in. So we would still do the full projects with fidelity, but this gives us flexibility should we bid out for McMichael and it comes in a little bit less what was allocated, Carpenter comes in a little bit more than what was allocated, you can move those funds between those three projects, but it does not diminish either one of the projects, okay? Because right now what we're seeing, we have what we call discrepancy between what we allocated, what the bids are coming in. We're in a better shape than some other places I've seen, but we want to make certain that we take care of the main projects from the bond program. And we feel that Carpenter, CTE, and McMichael, the three, really the key capstone projects is the ones that trigger everything else. We had put numbers out for the press box, they have come in beyond what we had allocated. And so I've asked for the press box on hold so, as, as to kinda hedge our bets even more. We think that with the bidding climate that we're gonna be working within, we think that with some savings from other places. For example, we had allocated $1.5 million for land acquisition Carpenter. We have about $650,000 of that left, so we would look at maybe offsetting the discrepancy with those funds. We have savings on the transportation project that could be reallocated to these funds if need be. We have maintenance projects, some have already been expended and have come in with savings, so we're gonna allocate those. Should we have to, worst case scenario, have to sacrifice a project, it would be the press box that we would not build. We may renovate it, but we would sacrifice that if we have to, anything at all. Just maintain the, I think, the integrity of the community's expectations. I'm confident that we'll be able to do it all, it's just that this is hedging our bet because of the volatility in the markets right now in terms of construction pricing. And so we have friends from PBK here as well to help with any questions you all may have, but we're already working to, to have a contingency plan, not only contingencies built into the projects themselves, but also with other savings from other projects that will be completed with fidelity. And again, if there's, worst case scenario, if there's a sacrifice we have to make, we will begin with the press box.
I totally understand the, the global of what you're trying to do, but I don't know if I understand exactly what this action specifically does. Can you help me with that a little bit?
What this does allows us to bundle all three projects into one GMP.
And what is that, how, how is it currently? What is it?
You would have a GMP for each project.
Each project. And so, and right now, we've already, we've already selected that one for Carpenter, haven't we?
That, we, we have the construction manager at risk.
Okay.
So we have, working toward a guaranteed maximum price GMP.
Okay.
Doing individual GMP, you can still do the same thing, but it's easier to have a bundled GMP so that you can more easily flow funds from one project to the other should the need present itself. Our intent is to build each of those three with fidelity. If there's any savings in the projects, they first, we look first there to offset the discrepancy that we currently are projecting we may have. We don't have contracts with subs, subcontractors yet, once with the contracts that going to where we are, but right now, our preliminary looking, looks, we're looking at anywhere from five to five and a half million dollars discrepancy for the all three projects combined. We will be looking at a guaranteed price number to bring to you this Thursday, but we're already working to offset that with contingency plans should the need present itself. But by having a combined GMP for all three projects, we can move funds more easily between, among the projects.
Is that basically all it's doing is saying you're, it allows those funds to move versus, is there any economy of scale here?
It could be.
Benefit?
It could be. It could be.
But not necessarily, that's not the primary objective.
No, the primary objective is to bundle all three together into one GMP number. Each project will be built to fidelity as you've approved the design plan, okay? Should, once we get the, get the bids on one project and they come in below what we've allocated, those funds are available for the other two projects.
But wouldn't that be true if you were doing it individually? And I'm, I'm sorry, this is a new concept for me, so I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
It would be, but you would have a number of individual projects, GMPs to, to, to move from. This, this puts it all into one big bucket. And we wanna make sure that these three projects will bid at the same time, come in with, with the number that we're comfortable with to guarantee that these projects are done.
Because basically, I think what I'm hearing you say is, these, these three are our flagship projects, we wanna make sure these get, get done correctly, they're gonna come before any of the other because we're gonna get these done and get these done correctly. The, all right, but we currently though, I guess my struggle there is, in my head as I'm thinking about that, if, I, I know that they're, they've been working hard on the McMichael, trying to get it within a feasible budget, and I'm sure Carpenter's the same way, does that mean any one of these could potentially be scaled back?
No, no. Once you approve the design plan, what we've been talking about will be what we will build. By getting these approved upfront with, with the bids and whatnot, we're locking these three in as our first, as our, as our, as our first three big projects. Any savings that may realize, may materialize from these projects could be used for other projects, but we're not gonna be scaling back these three. You run the risk of that being a factor if you delay these after other projects.
Right, like if you move forward with, with Carpenter and you move forward with McMichael and then you, you could risk the CTE building not having full budget or something like that.
But this way, we get these done first and if there's any discrepancy that still remains, we take it from other, other parts of the project, including savings from projects and again, worst case scenario, the press box.
Mm-hmm, I got you.
But I would not want you to press box and other things and then come up and we can't do something with these three projects.
So instead of looking at each of these projects individually for what that budget is gonna be, what we would be looking at is one budget for all three instead of each individual budget?
We will still have documentation for the individual budgets, projects.
Okay, good.
We still have that. This just creates a part of money that we pull from to maintain the integrity of each of those projects. And again, should we fall short of funding, we don't cut the project, we move funds from other places.
I guess I'm still having trouble understanding and we've talked about it.
Okay, I got it. There's three pockets for these three projects. We're gonna take all that money and put it in one pocket and we're gonna pay and have fidelity to that until we have it all done, or if we're a little short, we go find some money somewhere else to put in that pocket.
Yes.
So it, and then there's an ease of, you can move it around and pay today and today is cheaper than tomorrow.
Yes, you nailed it.
Just, just to add to that, and that's totally correct, sir. One of the things that we're asking WRL to do is look at an overall GMP that contains three projects, regardless of the three projects. One thing that that allows them to do is issue one guaranteed maximum price, let's, let's call it $50 million. Within that $50 million, we will have itemized pricing for Carpenter, Michaels, and the high school. That allows them to write one contract for a roofer or one contract for a mechanical sub, allows them to get an economy of scale for that one contractor versus going to one contract for one, come back later and then do a second contract or a third contract.
And that's what I was curious, so that, it does offer the economy of scale.
It does offer economy of scale and they may achieve that economy of scale by telling them that the second and third project are coming also, it doesn't necessarily lock it in. The other thing it does is Mr. Fraley was, was noting, as we see, as they sign up, they do not have all of their subcontracts when we come to the board Thursday. As they sign up contracts, if they're over or under on any of the three projects, without coming to the, the board has approved an overall GMP for a grouping of three projects. We will not go over that amount without coming back to the board. However, if we went to the board with three individual amounts, as they sign up individual contracts, we would have to come back three times. So this, this guarantees we are not coming back to the board until there is an issue with the overall GMP, which we don't foresee that.
So to me, it sounds very much like this, this, this offers efficiency not only for us, but efficiencies for the companies involved, less, less paperwork, less bureaucracy, we can get a better price.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
That kinda thing.
Board, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate that.
Thank you. Board, knowing the explanation, if you're feeling comfortable, are there any objections to moving the item to consent agenda for Thursday evening? Any objections?
I would really recommend waiting until, until you get the actual number.
The actual amount? Okay.
I'd be curious to have discussion on what our, our numbers are looking like.
Okay. Item B, consideration annual school district audit for physical year. Ms. Barbara?
I am not gonna go through the, the, through the full audit. The auditors will be here Thursday night to go through that, but I do want to point out to you on your, you have a blue tab. That is our management letter. On the second page, we have one finding, expenditures in excess of appropriations, and it is for function 81, which is our construction and facilities acquisition. That happened as a result of an adjusting journal entry, which I have questioned and am in contact with the auditors. They, they, we have to book a 5% retainage fee on our construction projects, 5% of the complete, what I understand, of the completed work. We have $2 million, about 2.5 million in construction in progress. They booked a 1.2 million dollar retainage fee, that is over 54%. So I believe there is something very wrong there. I'm looking at it should be more like 125,000, which means this finding will go away. If you look on in the manag-, in the financial statement on page 194 and 195, that is the, this page is our budget versus our actuals. And I just wanted to point out to you, at the bottom of 194, there is the $83,000 that we went over because of that adjusting entry. And then on page 195, with this adjusting entry, you see that we have almost maintained our fund balance. We dropped by 278,000. I expect us to get that reversed and then we will actually grow our fund balance. And then I will leave the rest to the auditors on Thursday night, unless you have some questions that I could possibly answer.
We'll wait there tonight. Thank you. Any other questions?
You've always gotta try to find something.
I'm sorry, I'm just always, I, I feel like I'm talking y'all's ear off today.
Go ahead, Ms. Fraley.
I just wanna say an extra special thank you for getting this to us ahead of the board meeting. I think that's, that's been something, I know it can be challenging because you're dealing with an outside firm and having to get that information from them, but I truly appreciate having this in advance and congratulations on a, on a very good-looking audit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C will continue. Board, purchase of district vehicles, well, Ms. Barbara, we're back to you.
All right, so in our budget adoption, we allocated $280,000 for vehicles and we went out to bid on those vehicles and the results, we add, we added a second police vehicle and student nutrition vehicle that were not part of the 280,000, they were part of their own budget. We have since learned that we don't need a second police vehicle, so that just, that one will be ignored, but we still need one. So on page 250 are the results of the bid. I have detailed each vi- each bidder and the make and model of the vehicle that was brought forward as well as the evaluation total. We had four bidders, Martin Chevrolet, Tipton Ford, Tyler Ford, and Caldwell Ford. And on page 251, you'll see that we are going to award about half of the vehicles to Tipton Ford and the other half to Martin Chevrolet. And between the amounts that we will get on auctioning of the vehicles and then the pricing, we will, our budget will, should cover all the costs. Now on the student nutrition vehicle, Ms. Thacker has to get approval before we can purchase that, but we have everything in place for, when she does get approval, that we can purchase the vehicle that she has requested.
Board, any questions?
My question is, when we purchase these vehicles, they will be under warranty for a certain period of miles and months, is that correct?
Yeah.
Or do we automatically take over and keep the maintenance on them?
Well, they're, they're under warranty.
For that time period?
For that time period, yes.
And then we'll pick up the maintenance from our.
After the warranty.
I see there are a couple of situations where we did have a local bidder but, but chose to go out of town. Can I get a little bit more information about that? Why we would make that, that, that call, for example, on the, the second one listed there, the 2020 Silverado 1500 crew cab? Or the, there's probably one of the lower.
So the valuation took more into account than just the purchase price, but how it met the needs of that department, whether it may be cargo space or equipment or seating capacity. And so although the purchase price had the biggest weight in it, we had other weights and so as you can see, we, the highest score.
Well, and the, the bottom one is a little concerning then, if you, even if you look at it that way, the, the Chevrolet Silverado is at 88.5 on the evaluation and the Tipton Ford is at 88, so you've got a .5 differential there. All right. That's not huge.
Wait, I'm sorry, which one are you talking about?
The, the very bottom of the page.
The band. This one right here. Oh, on the.
And you know, with, with it being that close, I just, again, I, I want you guys to, to get what you need, but I question if it's, if it's that close, should, should we not consider going with the local?
Well, the, this is the band truck, which has a very expensive box attached to it. And if you look at the local, they did not bid the box. That's why you see that it's so much lower.
Well, and it's, it, but on the evaluation scale itself, it's evaluated.
But there's no box. There's no box.
Right, but if you had the, the box added to it even, I don't, I don't know if, how they, the valuation was, I'm just, I can't look at all that, I'm just looking at what the data I've got in front and.
Right.
I've got, a data that, I've got one vehicle that's rated at 88 and another vehicle that traded at 88.5, so you've got a .5 difference.
Right.
And one of them's a local vendor and one of them's an out-of-town vendor, so.
But they have to bid the box as well and they did not bid the box. That automatically would throw it out regardless of price.
With that in mind, if they did not complete the bid properly, they still came in close in the valuation. And probably you're gonna factor in too, in terms of, I know these, I've been in Fords and Chevys and there's a different performance, there's a different ride. We know that those that travel a lot prefer the Chevy, those that do a lot of heavy maintenance stuff around town prefer the Fords. So yeah, there may be an issue with how this was scored, because if they didn't make the bid in terms.
And with the box, if we look at the, Martin's box was about 20,000. If we added that to the Tipton, they would be 10,000 more.
Good explanation.
But the outlier is, is in that, that rating.
Yeah, that's, that's a little way close.
And then we have.
Which just does the vehicle in this case.
Board, any further questions, comments?
And their, their police cars, they come totally equipped?
Yes, they do.
Thank you, board. Thanks, Alan, on agendas. D, first reading policy. Next item on the agenda is D, first reading policy, update 114. Mr. Morton, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Good afternoon, President Neal, members of the Board, Interim Superintendent Fraley. TASB has released update 114. The revisions are found on your action sheet on page 252, starting with page 252. Note that the highlighted policies have additional revisions beyond update 114, recommended by administration. Last month, or month before last, you all were visiting update 113, and there was a question as to why some were struck in red, and some words then returned back in blue. The answer to that, TASB has answered that for us, and they run a document comparison software. And those things that you see that are like that throughout your policy revisions are actual drop-down boxes in their software that they have to select an answer for, because they do policies for hundreds of different districts across the state of Texas. So that's why you see that those words struck, and then, and then you see the very same words in blue for the new. Administration is recommending policy BED local, that public participation at all board meetings be limited to agenda items. There are two versions in your board book. The first version is TASB's version. The second version is BED, is administration's recommendation. Local policy CH, CQ, FDE, and FL. Administration is recommending adding or designate back to those three, those four policies. Local policy BJA allows the superintendent to delegate authority. However, administration is recommending that you, we leave the designate or designate for retention of clarity in the situation. I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have about these local updates.
Ms. Morton, I'd be happy if, Ms. President, you speak to that, that last part. The way BJA reads, the superintendent may delegate anything not prescribed by laws necessarily. And in the event there's some discrepancy or debate about what is law and what is illegal in our local, the designate denotes the, in policy, does allow superintendent to delegate it, should be within each of those certain areas. There are a lot of pieces that we're still reviewing from slash later session. And there are some that we're probably going to find some conflicts with. And so I just wanted to leave the number, the language present, it doesn't change material or anything other, it just limits any perhaps exposure and our liability. See the language not be there in terms of designate. They're getting very helpful in job description writing in Austin. Probably some help we don't really need, but as a man, I certainly respect the role. But looking out for superintendents really around the state even, no one person can do everything. And language is saying superintendent shall, 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 all across the document, the legislation. Superintendent can't do all those shals. And BJA, I don't think, was sufficient to speak to the delegatory authority of the superintendent. Or just needs delegates every now and then.
Board, any comment? What are you, Ms. Policy, are you, you considering moving the consent agenda? Anyone object to moving this particular one, policy update 114? And also back to C, let me take one at a time. So you okay with TASB's policy update 114? The Board is okay with moving that to consent agenda? Thank you, Board. What about back to policies, C, consideration purchase of district vehicles? Do you need additional information? Are you okay with moving it to consent agenda? Anyone objection? Holly, C, back to consent agenda, and also E, D. Thank you, Board. For the next item on the agenda is the presentation by search firms for selected superintendent schools. And before I begin, I'd like to say to our superintendent, you know, I'm, we're not exactly ready, but anyway. I want to thank you for coming and committing and working for our district, and how far you brought us, Mr. Fraley, to commit, you made to this community, the impact you've had on this community, our students, our school district. Thank you for your leadership, and we truly appreciate what you've done for us.
Brother Neal, it has been an honor to have worked with each and every one of you guys, and to still pledge to be available. Should the new superintendent be okay with it, and the Board okay with it, to help any way that I possibly can. Without a legal role or authoritative role, I will still be available to consult. It sounds like, not a contract, but just to help out with processing and managing the bond. I've done about $3 billion worth of bond projects in my career, and there are a lot of things that don't just come naturally. And this is something that the community has truly trusted us with. And I want to do everything that I possibly can to help make sure that we have these bonds delivered and the projects with fidelity. And any other way I can help out, more than happy to do so. I do plan to still be around. This is still my hometown.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kelly Kucheski, and I'd like you to walk us through, and where we are.
Good afternoon, Mr. Neal, Mr. Fraley, and Board members. Ms. Anderson is passing out a binder for each of you. You should recognize on the front of your binder, you have a copy of the posting that went out to the various search firms asking for an expression of interest. When you open up the binder, you'll see the identity of the firms that we sent the posting to, the date that the posting was sent, the date the response was received, the contact information of the contact person, their email and telephone information. We also received a couple of "thank you, but we're not able to respond at this time." And then there were a couple that didn't respond at all, and so I've identified that for you as well. Behind the first two tabs, you'll have information which includes the actual response from the two firms that have been asked to come present for you today. What I've also done though is I've included not only the proposal, but also a copy of all email communication from our office in those firms. So you have the totality of all communication from the district to the search firms. As well as, in the back, I've also included for you a note-taking section, so that you can just rip that out and take some notes today, or keep it in the binder for you. As well as the communication from those firms that kindly responded with "not able to help at this time." I wanted you to have everything in front of you that has come from our office to those firms in back, so that you could see the correspondence and the communication. I believe on your agenda, you have Arrow Search Firm who will be presenting first, and then TASB will be second. If you would, I'm assuming you're wanting to step out. We have a, go over to the executive boardroom if you'd like the place to sit, I see. And I can certainly take them back there and let them sit there while you hear the report or the presentation from Arrow. And any questions before you begin?
I have one question. It's just what the Board would like to do, a full presentation, questions during the presentation, all the full presentations, and then we write, make notes, and questions at the end of the presentation.
Yes, that is perfectly acceptable.
Board, if it's okay, would y'all consider, let's let the firm do a full presentation. We're going to make notes and write questions down. Then at the end, we'll come back for those questions and respond to those, and we'll do that for both firms. If that's okay with the Board. Is that okay with that? Some of the, some of our questions, I'm sure you answered as you go through the process, so thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Board members, Superintendent Fraley, guests, administrators. And I have a hard time staying back here, so if I'm supposed to be on camera and just tell me, oh, did you see that? He gave me the, stay here, okay. I am Russell Marshall, and I'm here with my business partner, Jim Dunlap, to help you decide if we are the best candidate, the best firm to help you find the next superintendent for the most important decision you'll ever make as a board member. I began Arrow Educational Services in 1998 with the express purpose of providing support, assistance, and training to school trustees and to school administrators. Very quickly, though, we found our niche to be superintendent search services. And over the past 21 years, this month, we've placed over 170 superintendents across the state of Texas. Jim came on board with me in 2004 when I took the superintendency. I left the college life, college world, and took a superintendency in Maybank, where I spent the last 16 years. I retired in June from Superintendent Maybank. It's a large 4A district on Cedar Creek Lake in Kaufman County, at the corner of Kaufman, Van Zandt, Henderson County. As you can see on our background, Jim's retired three times as superintendent from Havel. They kept bringing him back. So we have experience as a superintendent in districts like this. Also, Jim's from Carthage, and I'm a native of Tempsin. And between, we were talking on the way down, between the two of us, our immediate family, we have nine degrees from Stephen L. Foster. And so that's good. And also, I taught, I taught and trained, I've trained over 1,000 principal candidates, some in this room, and I've trained over 300 superintendent candidates. But what I really want to answer today is, are we the best fit for you? And to do that, you know, we're going to need to leave time and let you ask questions. We've heard you've asked good questions on other things, and I think what you'll understand pretty quickly is that about 80% of a search is done the same way. Whether you did it, whether the other search firm does it, we do it, or any of the others that didn't choose to come today, it'll be the same. What we want to talk about is that 20% that we think makes the difference with us for you. And then I want to leave it open again, Mike, for questions. The process. If you hire us, what happens, okay? Obviously, Mr. Fraley is going to go back and be retired again, so we've got to have a process in between. The first thing we'll do is, if you hire us, is we'll, we'll go out and kind of go fishing. We put it on all the, all the boards. You say, well, where, where do you go? How do we get candidates for Nakadochas ISD? Well, we, we put it in the usual places. We put it on the Tassanet. We put it on Texas ISD, our dear friend Joe Smith. And with that, I might add, you'll always be at the top because we're the preferred provider for them. How otherwise? Well, word of mouth. We're going to have people out there and say, hey, did you know so-and-so's looking? We do that. You're going to hear names. You're going to have names. You're going to give those to us. But the most important way is we're going to recruit. We are not going to take a list from, you know, Ennis, our last search of this size, and say, oh, they didn't make it at Ennis, let's take them to Nakadochas. Now, we have a knowledge of this area, and a knowledge of what you need, and we are going to recruit for you. It's going to be your search, and it's going to be very highly tailored for you. Now, we really don't need a lot of input from, from other areas, people from other areas of the state. We need input on what you need from here. Now, that doesn't mean we don't need to recruit from other areas, don't get me wrong. But we need to know what you know. Now, you've done a wonderful job, I saw on your website and on the posting, of putting the bones together, the framework of three important things you're looking for. And I call that the portrait, because what I like to say a lot of times is, we're given a blank slate. And I don't, I don't know if you're an artist or not, but we're going to give you just a little bit of paint. And you've already put a little together by those, that framework of those three things you're looking for. But then what we're going to ask you to do is, we're going to ask you to let us come in and get input from the major stakeholders, okay? That's your employees, your community members, and your taxpayers. And we'll put together focus groups, and you're going to hear this again, too. But each of those will come in, and we'll give them paint, and they'll put more together. And then when we get input from you, we get input from the stakeholders, and all together, then we can unveil the portrait of your next superintendent. Then we know what we're going after. We don't just throw it out there and say, this is what we need. You don't go to the grocery store and walk down all aisles and say, well, maybe I need that. No, you make a list before you go, so you know what you're going after. And we're going after the person that is specific to what we need here. We'll put together a timeline. And one other way, too, we send out an email to every sitting superintendent in the state. Monthly, we update that. We provide a service, and that goes out to every sitting superintendent in the state. The timeline, it'll be yours. I had a sample today, but then I started thinking, you know, why bring you a sample timeline of what we want? We don't need to tell you what we want. Now, I'll tell you what I think on time as far, we never keep it open less than four weeks unless the Board specifically wants it. And we think over six weeks is usually a little long also. So with the holidays coming, we would adjust that, but that's not something we do today. That's something you'll do whether you hire us, or you hire the other firm, or you do it yourself. We, that's, that doesn't even need to be done today, but we do put that together. From there, we put it, we put out the, for the names, we get it all together, we come back to you. Now, I'm going to throw out a number. Say you have 50 applicants. You don't really need 50 applications in front of you. That's why you hire us. Now, at any time, they're available to you, but we'll come back on the night that we do the cut, and we will bring every name, you'll have a list of every name, who they are, what they do, and where they do it. And we'll come back to you and visit with you about who we think are your top 10, 12, 15 people. There's no set number. We don't, you know, it may fall a little less and a little more. More simply put, we don't tell you who to hire, we tell you who not to hire, okay? We get rid of a lot of things that, that you don't have the time or the expertise, quite frankly, to do. And we'll do that, but we'll bring every name to you, and you, that'll be a long meeting. That'll be a night that we'll roll up our sleeves and we'll really get after it, okay? From there, we'll set your interviews up. We'll keep it very professional. And we have a relationship with the attorney that we will, she and I will, and Jim, we'll be working back and forth together on working closely with the candidates. That's one thing we pride ourselves on. We work very closely with candidates, but we work for the school board, and we never forget that, okay? When we come back, we'll, we'll have the first round. We'll narrow it down to your top two or three, depending on how they fall. And we will work with the Board on bringing those individuals back for a final interview, hopefully with their families. And then, they're no, they're no longer the one, they're coming to us in the first round. When we narrow it to the finals, we're after one or two of them. We've got it narrowed to them. So then, we become heavily recruiters then, because we want to bring, we want to highlight the great things about Nakadochas. You know, from the, from, from the fact, you know, earlier you were talking about bringing people in, you know, when, when they come here for ballgames, and that just music to my ears. If you break even, just think of the thousands of people that come in and get to see the city. And so we bring them, and we show them the highlights, and we show them the advantage of living and working in still what I call small-town East Texas, and still working in a, in an environment where you've got a university town, and the advantages to their, to their families, and the great things. And folks, I'm going to tell you, it's time. This district deserves a superstar. I was superintendent when I was 29 years old in Tenahaw, and I coveted two places. One was Henderson, and one was Nakadochas. Never got the opportunity to be here because my career went a little different way. I did get to work as an assistant in Henderson for a few years. But I think this is still the great district that it's always been, and I'm not, I'm not here just blowing smoke. But I believe that to take it to the place it can be and should be, we've got to work together, and we've got to get a leader in here that can take the bull by the horns and take it to that. and take it to that next level. I'm going to stop and answer questions, because I always get a lot more added, and you will also.
Thank you, sir.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
My question to you is, you said that you had over 170 superintendents that have gone through your system to be hired. And you also said that 80% of the searches were done the same way. So, my question is, why is there a difference in cost for that service from one agency to another?
I don't, I don't know what somebody else charges.
Well, let me, let me put it this way. Why do you feel like your agency would be the best one that we could go with?
Go with, because I think personally, in this situation, we have such intimate knowledge of this area. And we're going to be, I'm going to be your number-one cheerleader. I'll be the lead consultant. And that's another thing, when you point out the 170, I've done 170. You're looking at it. Jim came on in '07, and he's worked with me on it, but I've done all 170. Now, there's advantages of having 10 or 12 other people out and about, maybe, but we don't. We, we're, it's us, and we're both retired. And I'm going to be your lead consultant, and you're going to be a priority, and that's why we're the best choice.
I'd like for you to expand a little bit about, you made a statement that you work very closely with the candidates. Can you give me, or give us some ideas of how you work closely?
Absolutely. Well, you know, it starts by, you know, if we recruit them or if they call with questions, we're going to have gone through and put together the profile that I talked about. They're going to call, and they're going to want, they're going to want information about it. Now, one thing we don't do, we don't put it all out there so that they can, they can tailor their letter or their application to what you say you need. We work with them on, you know, if it says an experience in a diverse district. You know, we're going to go back and forth with, and if they don't meet, if they don't check off that box, then we're going to find out that they check off all the others. So, if we're looking at 10 things we think are important, and they hit eight of them or nine, then they're going to be a candidate we're going to come talk to you about. If they hit two, then we're going to talk about them if you bring their name up. But we work with them. Communication is very important. And another thing after the fact, it's important to communicate with those men and women that don't get an interview, because they need to know that their time was valued, and they were considered to.
And my last question is, of the 170 that you were speaking about, that you had found a district for, about how many of those were like about the size of Nakadoches that you dealt with?
Probably got 12 to 15. The most recent, you know, Ennis, we've done, you know, we've, and not only, and that's, let me, let me add to that, too. It's also important, the size of the district's important, but also the demographics are important. The region's important, you know? Even though it's, it's, they're small, you know, some of the area schools we've done. And that's important, too, but very good, very good point.
That's all I have.
Russi, I have, I have two questions I just want to ask you.
Okay.
You mentioned you have knowledge of this area.
Yes, sir.
Would you elaborate a little bit about that, just a minute, about knowledge of this area? And then you talk about the stakeholders, how important it is to get input from stakeholders. Elaborate on those two areas.
Okay. All right. First of all, the area. Born, raised in Timpson. Spent my entire life there, and I remember it as an eight-year-old going down, taking swimming lessons when, when all the streets were streets, you know? Now, you go through there, and there's no streets anymore. But I've spent my whole life here. I've got two degrees from Stephen F., so I lived here basically for four and a half of those six years. And I've worked in area districts. You know, I was in Tenahaw. I was in Henderson for seven and a half years, and then my four and a half years on the faculty at SFA. I just feel like I have the, the knowledge of East Texas and of Nakadoches. I really do. And I believe that, that what you want is somebody out there wearing your brand. I think you want somebody bleeding that black and gold, not just because Timpson's black and gold. I think you want, you want somebody bleeding that. I think you need somebody that knows your successes, but maybe even more importantly, Mr. Chairman, somebody that knows your failures, and willing to be able to communicate that to candidates that might be a little skeptical, okay? Because sometimes, you know, we don't, as I said earlier, we don't just sit back and say, "Okay, here's the door. Everybody applies, and who applies, we talk to, and who doesn't, we don't. We've got to go after them." And number two, the second part of that was...
Stakeholders.
Stakeholders, yeah. As I said, y'all put the bones together with your three major things you're looking at, and those are wonderful starting points. But I think some boards don't get enough input, and some want too much input. I believe, we believe, you're elected because this is one of the two major things you do. Iron fire superintendent, approve the budget. You hear that at all your trainings. But it's so important to get input from people, because you are, even though you're, you're not a representative, you are representative of the, of the district. But it's also important that you hear from the masses on some things that they are happy with. And again, Mr. Neil, the things are unhappy. And you say, "We need to go this time," or "This is what we liked about previous," or "This is what we didn't." So, I think that's, that's the bottom line. We go and we get input, and that's through, that's through focus meetings. And y'all will give us those lists, you know? We'll ask, we will ask all of you to give us a list of names, and we'll, you know, businessmen, businesswomen, employees online. We do an online survey, so, you know, in this day and age, a lot of people won't come to a meeting. But if you give them an opportunity for input, we do an online survey, especially employees, because I promise you, they work hard a whole day, and at the end of the day, the last thing 99.99% of them want to do is come to a meeting to give input. They want to have the opportunity to give input without that. And so, we have an online survey that's anonymous. I tell them, you know, "We don't want your name. We want what's on your heart. We want your feelings." And they give us that information, and we put it together into themes, and we bring that to you. And we say, "Ladies and gentlemen, this is what the survey says. This is what the survey groups say." And we come back to you.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? On the surveys?
Yes, sir.
How many surveys do you try to get back from the community?
Okay. You know, we've had, we've had, and had as few as 30, and we've had as many as 300. I'm going to say in a district like this, you're going to get probably between 150 and 200 of those. I think it would, I think you'd need at least 100 to have a good representative group.
Boy, questions?
Dr. Marshall?
Yes, sir.
If there is a highly qualified candidate
Yes, sir.
that you feel like could be fit, what do you offer him as far as information concerning Nakadoches to be attractive to him or her?
Okay. And I'm going to fill in that other question, too, as I, as I go to you. When we, because I didn't fully finish his question a while ago about the candidates, how we work with them, they're going to want, you want people that are in a warm place right now. You want people that are successful or have been successful, okay? That's what you want. You want, you don't want somebody that, that somebody just fired, okay? Okay, so, so what I'm saying there, good, successful people are going to want to communicate because they don't want to be exposed. They want to know that they've got a, that this is a good fit for them, and it's worth their time, and it's a place they want to move their family and take as the next step in their career. So, as we start offering that information to help them understand that, we're going to, we're going to use part of the things we get together from the, from the surveys. We're going to go back, and we're going to talk about history with them. We're going to talk about the things that we say we know, and we're going to talk about the things we learn. You know, we visit with people. We visit with the attorney. We visit with your staff. We visit with your superintendent, and we provide that kind of feedback to them. You know, we won't, we don't want to encourage anybody falsely. We don't want to scare anybody off, but we want to be very transparent. We want to be honest with them, so that when they come in here, they know the challenges, and they know what it takes for them to be a successful leader here. You know, different people can be successful in different places, and then they can be not successful other places. You know, Jim had a superintendency in a little place called Begville right after, when I was in Tenahaw. I wouldn't have lasted 10 minutes in that. You know, Crandall's 40 minutes from Maybank. I lasted 16 years there, lasted 16 years there. I could go to Crandall and not last 16 weeks, because I'm not a fit there. And in the end, the candidate you hire is just like the firm you hire. Who's the best fit? Who do you believe will be the best cheerleader for you, the best recruiter for you? And who do you believe can come into this boardroom around these tables when we're in executive section and tell you just how it is, and has the courage to tell you how it is? You know, we don't, obviously, we're here today because we want to do the search. But we won't do it at all costs. We won't do it at the expense of, of not being honest with you. You know, so, I mean, we're going to tell you as it is, like it is. And there may be times that, that we get quite frustrated with each other along the way. But we're going to work together, because if you hire us, we're part of the team, and we're here with you till you hire that superstar. And I mean that. I mean that.
All right. I've got a couple of questions. Imagine that. I'm curious, out of your placements, I understand you've done 170. I'm probably more curious about your more recent superintendent searches that you've concluded successfully and what their average tenure was at the districts.
See, that's, that's a question that's really a slippery question, because I think when you, when you answer it, we've had, we've had people that stay, you know, I want to say the average is a little over four, probably. And especially, now, here's one of our problems. Now, this is going to sound, well, I'll just say it, and you decide. We have the problem when we get medium districts, medium to start again, this, we have the problem, we've been a victim of our own success. Because when you hire a superstar in some, if the district is not willing to take care of the person financially and in other ways after four or five years, somebody's coming after them. Some of these other people are going to come. Now, we're not going to, because we, we make a pact with you that the only way we go after somebody that we've placed is if they come to us. We will not ever recruit your superintendent. Less than a handful of times in the whole 170, you'll see that we have taken one that we've placed, and every single time, they've come to us. So, that's very, that's very important. I mean, look at the success rate, because when you see the, some of the big-time superintendents, their first job was through us. Dr. Moses used to kid me. He said, "You know, you can be our minor league." He said, "You go get them, and we'll find out if they're any good, and we'll, we'll take them on." But there's a, we've hired some great people, but they don't always stay, do they, Mr. Fraley?
That segues into my next question, I think, really well, and that is, I mean, I think we recognize Nakadoches is, you know, I'm going to call it one of the, kind of a mid-major, and that...
Fair enough.
You know, you're likely to get somebody that, you know, hopefully, it's a rising superstar, and we're going to hold on to them as long as we can.
Right.
You know, when you are a superstar, you tend to get recruited away.
Amen.
So, with that in mind, what would you say the ideal candidate for us looks like? Is it somebody coming in from a 5A that's maybe an assistant that's never been a superintendent? Or is it like a 3 or 4A superintendent that's ready to make another leap? What does, in your opinion, what does that ideal candidate look like?
They've got to be very, very special to move into that chair with no, with having never sat in that chair. Because the difference is, you've got about 1,000 employees here. Every one of those works with a safety net. That chair has no safety net. That chair walks the tightrope without a safety net. And so, that's, it's so important, the experience is so important. Now, that's not to say your next person's not going to be a, you know, a 6A deputy. But I think if, you know, when we put out the facts about this district and what we're looking for, men and women, they're going to come seeking us. Everybody's running, folks. They're either running from something or to something. And I think what best answers your question is, we want somebody that's running to Nakadoches ISD. That's who we're after. We're after that man or woman that wants to be here and wants to settle here. Now, our, our dream is that they stay like Rick Albritton in Gilmer's, been there 18 years. I mean, he's been there, I told him, I said, "Rick, I can't make any money. You need to leave," you know? At last, jokingly, but that would really be our goal. We don't want them to come and stay four years, but, but let's ask this. If we can get that star, and we lose them in five, six years, how cheap insurance is that for, to bring us back? I'd rather hire a superstar and lose them in four to six years than I would hire our third or fourth choice, because we want to keep them.
Exactly.
You know, Jim, Jim was at a meeting one night I couldn't go to, and one of the board members was talking, and they were having trouble with their superintendent, and they were really glad that that person had left. And they said, a little bit later, they said, "Well, we want somebody that's going to come here and stay." And Jim just looked over at him, and he said, "Isn't that what the last one just did?" And so, he laughed. So, what you want to do, you don't want to settle. And I'll say this, what if we get down to the end, and we're not happy? You know what? We go, we cast the net again.
Well, that was going to be my very next question. What if we get down in our number-one choice, and we get into kind of the deeper discussions, and number-one choice says, "Yeah, nah, I'm not feeling it."
Okay.
Where do we go from there?
All right. I'll, I'll condense this the best I can, and I'll use Ennis again as an example. We got a call a year ago right now and said, "Would you come talk to us in Ennis?" I said, "You thought you just finished your search." Their search was unsuccessful, and they were unhappy, so they wanted to talk to another firm. So, they talked to us. We went back out after they'd done, and we had 66 applicants, I believe. Narrowed it down, and they talked to five. Now, the night they hired us, I stood in the middle, and they specifically told me what they were going to pay. And I, I don't like that, because there's a different value in different people. Yes, there's obviously a cap on what you have, but, but everybody brings a different value. There's a minimum, no matter who's in the chair, because the job has worth. But the value of that man or woman sitting in that chair adds to the worth, okay? So, in that situation, they didn't have what they liked. And so, they were frustrated. And the board chairman said, and I can give you his number, you can call him, you know, back this up. The board chairman said, "What's wrong?" I said, "You've asked for Moby Dick, but you sent us out with a Mena and a brim hook." And he said, "What will it take?" And I told him the number. And he said, "What do you suggest we do now?" I said, "I suggest you let us bring you three names now." And he said, "Why didn't you tell us earlier?" I said, "Because I stood in front of you that night, and you told me adamantly what we were going to do." So, we got back together, and one of those things, like I told you a while ago, we bumped heads a little bit. And we came out and said, "You know what? We can fight like family, but we're on the same page." We went out and recruited. They called me before he left. I was actually in Douglas that night doing the search, and we were at a recess. My phone rang. I looked down, and they said, "Call him." And I called him, and he said, "I'm not out of the parking lot yet." I said, "They're in love." And so, they hired, that's who they hired. So, that's a long example, but I think it's an important example about how we stay with you. And that's what you get when you have me, and I'm focused on you.
I was wanting to quantify, because we were asked difficult questions on how many you've placed. In 2018, how many total superintendents did you place, and 2019, how many?
2019, we've placed 11, if you, if you include the Texas Association of Midsize Schools Executive Director, which we count that as a search. So, we've, we've placed 11. And in, I think it was either eight or nine last year. Now, remember, we weren't retired then, or he was, but I wasn't retired then. So, that, we've put it on, we've put it on steroids this year. Now, but last year, we also, if you notice, we also were, were asked to do the Texas Association, the school administrators, the executive director search. That's probably the most elite search in this state, more than Dallas, Houston, any of that. That, that's the most elite.
Okay. Include, including in your charges, that would not include legal challenges or a criminal background check? We'd pay for that out of our own pocket. You'd get apart from that.
Good question, because on the criminal background, I can't do them, because the school has the ability to do them and through your attorney that, that we don't. And so, that, and if you did any type of a financial background check, yes, that would be, that would be part of that. But the criminal background's not a big expense for you.
How about if there's some kind of legal... How about if there's some kind of legal problem in, in your recruiting? Is that covered through your, your fee or we pay an additional fee?
Never had it happen, so that was covered in my fee.
Okay.
Yeah, but I will be back and forth with, with your attorney because we, we make sure we, you know, we, we're very, very prepared when we come to you.
Boy, any other questions?
You guys asked them all.
I have, I have one more question.
Okay, sir.
You talked about demographic. You tried, you said you tried to get a candidate that might fit the demographics as much as possible. Knowing the demographics of Nakadoches, do you feel that you would be able to find enough candidates that would want to pursue being a superintendent here?
Oh, absolutely. Now, you're not, like I said, you're not going to get somebody that's going to tick every box, okay? You're just not going to do it. But if you look, you know, you've already got the, the, some of the things that, that, you know, we'd be looking at. I mean, when you start talking about, you know, first of all, have they improved scores? Have they made a place better, okay? And are they leaving it better than they found it? Number two, relations with minority and diverse backgrounds, at risk, limited proficiency, economically disadvantaged. You know, obviously, I'm not going to call the superintendent of Highland Park or the deputy there and say, are you interested in coming to Nakadoches? Because it goes back to what I said a while ago, Mr. Fray, it's a fit. And third, you're talking about the, you know, they're going to have a climate of transparency, mutual trust and cooperation. Number one, if you're not transparent, you know, if it, if it doesn't start on the right track, you're never going to get it on the right track. But yes, I think, I think we can provide you a strong field. In fact, I will predict more than what we just talked about on getting there and saying, ah, I will predict, if you hire us on that final night, one of you is going to look around and say, can we hire both of them? That's the more common than the other. Can we hire both of them? Time will tell. All I can promise you is we will, we will pour every bit of our expertise, our time and our reputation into bringing you that star if you hire. We, we would love the opportunity.
Thank you.
Russ, we, Dr., Russ, we thank you. Thank you for joining us. Thank you, Jim. Thank you for being here. And we'll be getting back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did I do good?
Thank you. We're in here.
Appreciate it.
We don't want the greatest, we want the bestest.
Boy, let's take a five-minute break and be back at one forty-five. Five-minute break and we'll come back.
Board Presidents of each one of those three districts, we make a decision and ask them about our services, because we were able to attract very strong experienced superintendent applicants for him to choose from, and all three of them were real to death the superintendent they selected, especially Henderson, Gilmore, and they've been very pleased with the process and who they wanted. So that being said, it's a great process. I will tell you, Mr. Feckler is our director, he is the TASB ESS guy on the field service rep, but anytime anything happens to NACADOSIS, I'm your field service guy, I'll be here. You'll see my face also, and I will actively recruit you some great candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe Dan. A little bit about our process, we have a multi-spoke process, and we start off with a planning meeting. We would sit down with you and plan out the search from start to finish, and we build it around what you're looking for, your timeline and things like that. We build on all the components. The next process after that, then we usually have our planning meeting, what that is, I mean, excuse me, our profile session meeting. And the profile session is where we come and we spend some time here, we visit with folks in the district, stakeholders in the district, employees, staff, anybody that would like to come visit with us live in a live meeting, we will be here. But also, before we even arrive, we also have an online survey, and the online survey is basically collecting data, and it's folks that really don't want to come up and talk to somebody live, but they can go online and fill out a survey. What's the survey asking? It's basically asking, you know, tell us what are the good things going on in the district, tell us some of the things that you have concerns with, and then what are you looking for as far as characteristics in your new superintendent? And we compile all of that information together after the live profile sessions, as well as the online survey session, and we present that back to you in a report. This is what we've heard and what we gathered in and everything like that. So that way you can see, I mean, you might know what everybody's thinking in your district, but this way folks that maybe not, that they won't show up for a board meeting can contribute to the superintendent's search process. And this is the, this is the public's opportunity to have an input into this whole process and things like that, and a lot of folks out there like that, because they feel like they have been brought in to the entire process, and so we feel like that's important. Following that, we wait a few weeks, and then we have obviously the application deadline date, and the application deadline date, and then we send you electronically all the applicant's information, so you're going to see exactly what we're seeing. And then you will sit down and go over that, and about seven to 10 days after you receive that information, we're going to come to you and we're going to sit down in a meeting, and in that meeting you also get three hours of board training credit, so that's always a good thing. And we sit down with you and we go over all the applicants that were presented that you want to talk about. Your homework assignment during that time would be going through the applicant's information and selecting eight to 10 applicants that you felt like, ah, those folks look pretty good, and we'd like to, I might like to find out some information about them. Because we're going to have information that you're not going to have, because we're going to do a lot of homework behind the scenes on each one of the applicants that applies for this position. I'll segue here for a minute and say, we're the only search firm or search consultants out there in the state that have personal, professional working knowledge of every single superintendent in the state of Texas. No other search firm can say that. No other search firm can say, as Joe Dan here is, can physically walks into every school district into the state of Texas. We're the only group that has it. What's the value in that? Because after you go in there for years and visit with folks in the district and you visit with the superintendents, you begin to pick up information and you gather data and things like that that we collect, and then when that person would apply for a position, we're going to share that information with the board that they're applying there. So that's a value that we offer, that nobody else can offer to you. It's not picking up a phone and saying, hey, tell me about this person, it's that we know because we're there, we walk in the doors. He has colleagues throughout the entire state, and you might say, well, why does somebody applies from out of state? Well, I'm the past president of the National Superintendent Searchers, and so everybody that would apply out of state, I just call up one of my colleagues who does the job that I do in Texas, and I gain information from them, because they're doing the same things that we're doing. So you have, it's kind of covered, we kind of covered the umbrella, if you will, that's out there. So after that big meeting where we're talking about all the applicants, you're going to decide who are the applicants that you would like to bring in for interview, and they will narrow that group down to the whatever number, usually most boards like to start off with six, and they'll bring in their six and interview for a first round interviews. And then after the first round is complete, then we'll be back and we'll sit down with you and you'll say, okay, we've interviewed six, these three are going away, but these three we'd like to bring back for a second round interview. Our second round interview is more of a dialogue conversational style interview, and it's an interview where we also encourage the board to invite the spouse of the candidate to attend. We usually have a social at the front end, so it's kind of a meet and greet, so you can kind of get to know both the spouse and the candidate, and then after the social's over with and the spouse is excused and the candidate goes in for the second round interview. Then following those three interviews, then you will narrow that down to the candidate of choice, we're not to the lone finalist yet, we're to candidate of choice. And the candidate of choice is simply a person that you selected that you would like to go and visit to their particular district. It's three board members traveling to the candidate's home district and visiting with folks there. So we, about 85% of our boards take a site visit to that candidate's home district. Then after the site visit's over with and you come back usually the next night and you vote to name that person the lone finalist, and then after the lone finalist, obviously you have to wait the 21 days, and then you vote to hire the new superintendent. So as I mentioned, you know, why hire us? Because most Texas school district, I think we've conducted a little under 800 superintendent searches in our history. So more Texas public schools entrust their search with us than anybody else, and so we feel very proud of that. The other reason is 92% of our superintendents are on the job after three years, 80, I mean, 80% of them are on the job after five years. So we feel pretty good about that ratio. And the reason for that is because we do a lot of homework behind the scenes for you, and we work with you throughout the entire process. And the thing about us, we don't go away when we're done with the search. And the thing is, you know, I think you just mentioned, Joe Dan mentioned that he saw some of you at the legal seminar not too many days ago. And so we're at convention at SLI and things like that. So we have a stake in this and who you select, and that's why we feel like it's important. Now, let me say this, and this is important. We are not in the business of finding a superintendent a job. We're in the business of helping the school board find the right superintendent. And there is a difference. If you're wanting, if you're wanting someone to look out there and find their brother or their cousin or friend or something like that, then you don't need to hire TASB, because that's not what we do. Every search that we conduct is a brand new search, it's open to everyone, everybody has an equal opportunity to apply for the position. But we're going to keep going until you're, until you say amen. And once that, you say amen, then that's when we're going to be done, but again, we never leave. We offer you a two-year guarantee, that if the superintendent leaves within two years for any reason, we'll come back, no fee is charged, just travel expenses only. Is that what we, we have for your guarantee? At the end of that, at the end of the whole thing, then we also have a transition session. In the transition session, we feel is important. If you, our Leadership Team Services, if you know that division, they're TASB that runs all the conventions and the summer leadership workshops and all that, one of the folks out of Leadership Team Services will come and visit with you about transitioning the new superintendent into this role, working on, with you folks and working with the new superintendent. And we encourage that within the first 90 days that the new superintendent is on board. That only, if you hire us, that only costs you the consultants' travel and expenses. The fee is waived for that. And so, but it is valuable. I don't know if you were at SLI a couple of years ago and heard the Bernie Board, Bernie ISD, brought and presented on the transition session that TASB does with our consultant Orin Moore, and they did a presentation on the importance of the transition session. So I don't know if you caught that or not, but it was very, very good. But anyway, that's the multi-spoke facet of our process and how everything works. And at this time, Mr. Neal, we'll certainly entertain any questions that you might have for us.
Yeah, but you can begin with two questions for me, and you're from, at one time you were in Central, was that, no, is that right, Central?
Central, at Central ISD? Yeah, we just finished Central.
That's where you were, you were Huntington.
Oh, I was at Huntington.
Huntington, 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 Huntington. Talk about the area.
I knew Bobby Baker's at Central.
That's right, that's right, okay.
He was, he was our rival in basketball.
Talk about the importance of knowing the area, you know, knowing this area, you're familiar with this area, you've been in Huntington. And then my second question would be stakeholders, talk about how important it is getting input from stakeholders, just to elaborate a little bit more.
We feel like it's very important. A lot of folks out there sometime feel like, well, what we hear when we go from district to district, well, it doesn't really matter what we say because the board's going to make their selection. And our response is, no, this is your opportunity to share with the board. If you, if you say, it's kind of like, you know, the response that you hear, well, I didn't vote because it doesn't make any difference. Well, it does make a difference, you make a difference. And so we encourage folks to come out and visit with us. We will get a lot of input on the online survey. It's almost 10 to 15 to one responses on the online survey will come in versus the live session. But we have the live session in case someone just doesn't want to go on the internet or anything like that. Now, we'll say, the survey is set up in such a way that no one in the district or anywhere else has access to that. Once they hit that survey button, it takes them directly into our system, and so nobody can look in there to see what anybody else is writing. So it's anonymous and things like that. But the importance of the whole thing is, is that both staff and stakeholders, it gives them an opportunity to tell you what they're looking for in a superintendent. And so I think that's very valuable.
Can I tell, I have a question. Mr. Neal trustee, one of the things I'd like to elaborate on, this will be for you or my perspective as an experienced superintendent, it asks, it actually asked three questions. It says, what are the strengths of the district? So everybody's going to tell you, this is what's good, this is what's going on, this is doing really good things in that kind of size of state. But then it asks what are the concerns or challenges in the district and what needs a little attention? And what I find is on the online survey, you get more honest answers, because they're not standing in front of somebody speaking, everybody's going to say, well, I heard that person say it's a tough getting on. But where it's valuable is, is you get all those responses, every single one of them. So as a board of trustees, you get to read every single responses that's returned on that online survey. But the other thing that I think is really critical is we also give a copy of that report to the new superintendent. And then when they look down there and see what are the challenges and concerns, I now know what, where I need to spend my time and energies when I get there. And I'll use this as an example, there's always one, two or three things that kind of rise to the top in all of those responses, and teach morale is a common, you know, we have low teach morale, and we say that time and time and time again. But if I'm your new superintendent and I've seen multiple responses, and we have low teach morale, when I get to NACADOSIS, I'm going to see what I've got to do to get excited about being in ISD again. I'm going to see what do I need to do to improve teach morale. Student discipline is one that comes up, you know, it may not be here, but that's one that comes up a lot. But if I'm the new superintendent, I'm going, that's one of the first things I'm going to do, is what we need to do to improve student discipline, because perception of reality, there are a lot of people out there that think we've got discipline issues, so let's address that. So it does give you an opportunity, it gives you valuable information to determine where you need to devote a lot of your time and energies as you come in as a new superintendent.
Thank you.
Speaking of the survey, how many surveys do you try to, or do you feel comfortable in getting completed to have a good idea about where you need to go?
That's a good question, Mr. Petolio. Well, we will usually, we, gosh, most of the time we will get in the, two, three, even up to 500 responses on the survey. It's, you know, it's a pretty good, quite of the stakeholders and folks that are out there.
Just to tell you, and just real recently, in Henderson, I got 175.
And that's from the school district itself, or is that from the entire community?
That's the entire community, it's staff, it's staff, we call it staff, parents and community.
Okay.
I just recently completed Bullard ISD, which is a smaller district with about 2,700 students, I got 410 at Bullard.
Those are surveys also showing to the candidate as well, the result of the surveys?
It's not shown to the individual candidates, it's only shown to the candidate that you select.
Okay, don't you think sometimes people who get behind a so-called anonymously respond, they sometimes they put their wish list, or sometimes they express their anger, and most of the time, frankly, based as a person who worked, most of the time would be negative. That would not scare the final candidates or whomever looked at it?
To answer your question, yes, we have it from across the spectrum. But what usually, as Joe Dan said, what usually rises to the top, you see, you start seeing the common themes that are running through there. And some folks have said, well, what about somebody coming on and saying the same thing four or five times? Well, you begin to see that, you know? And we don't spend a lot of time with that, but what we're looking for is those central threads that are running throughout the survey and things like that. And we've done this so long that we can pretty much pick up on those types of things.
Over the last two years, how many of the superintendents that you guys have done searches for fit in the category or in kind of the size of NACADOSIS and kind of the demographics of NACADOSIS?
Goodness sakes, well, we've done, we've crisscrossed the state, so it's, there would be multiple folks that are out there that would fit into that category. We don't, we usually never, ever have a problem with quality folks that apply through us, because they, they liked our process, they trusted our process, and just in, I think Henderson, you said you had like terrific applicants. It was just a, one of the troubles that we run into is the board having difficulty because the candidate group is so strong that they're like, wow, how do we narrow this down to the ones that, you know, because I've just, we've just finished Dripping Springs, and Dripping Springs had probably 25 candidates that could step into the role of that superintendent. And their comment was, how do we get down to the six? And I said, well, that's what we sit here and we work through, all of these different things, and start looking, you know, what did your survey say? You know, what are the folks in the community, what are you looking for? And things like that, and we narrow that group down and we start fashioning all of these applicants and into what, you know, this district's needing in the new superintendent. And so that's how we get, usually get down to the number, the correct number that you're wanting to interview.
So how many, what would be the correct number? How many would you consider for NACADOSIS to be able to be, to look at?
You're, in this, you mean total is what you're looking for?
I mean, I mean, what would you, how many applicants would you recommend for us to look at, at the end of the day, when you go through all your process of searching and stuff?
Well, totally, you're going to get anywhere, I would say anywhere from 50 to 75 applicants for this position. And out of that group, you're probably going to have between 25 to 30 that are all highly qualified that could fulfill the role. Now, it's our job and your job to sit down and work together to get that number down to the group that you want to bring in for interview. It's like I said, we're going to have information on every single candidate that applies for the position.
If there are, excuse me, some superintendents who are not interested to leave their position, and however they are high performer, do you approach those people for movement, upward movement?
We will approach anybody that we feel like would be a good fit for this position here. And now, I will tell you, every school district in the state of Texas is a member of TASB. We do not strong arm anybody, but what we will do is that we will reach out to candidates that we know and we feel that are qualified, and we will encourage them to take a look at this position. And we'll say, you know, just take a look at it, it's all we're asking. And if they do, that's fine, if they don't, if they choose not to, then we understand that they are happy where they are. And, but nine times out of 10, if we give them a call and encourage them to take a look, they're going to take a pretty good look at it.
So I have a question. So as we start kind of going through the, maybe the top 10 or whatever when we get to that point, and we're evaluating them, do we have any evaluation tool to use, or is that something that we want to create? Or are we just going to go, because I think some of the things might be important to me, might not be as important to another one of our members.
That's a very good question. You know, we started that about two and a half years ago, and we created a matrix, and we brought it to the district, and that district was happy with it, because it was the one that they asked us to create. We took it to the next district and they didn't like it. They said, well, that's not what we're wanting. And so we said, well, this is what we've got. And so they said, well, we don't even want to use it because that's not what we want. And so we tried it, and they said, no, that we, we're not interested in that. So we can create one, you know, and offer it to you and say, this is what we can offer, that's strictly, you know, up to you. But many times what happens, and you would see this play out, is when each of you go through all the candidates, we encourage you to do a yes column, a maybe column, and a no column. And once you kind of create the yes column and you get those numbers inside that yes column, and you bring that to that meeting, and we start sitting down and board members are interacting and we're interacting and saying, you know, we give you the good, the bad, the ugly, if you will, then it kind of takes on a matrix of itself. Does that make sense?
Yes.
This is one of the, one of the things that will really help you in that process, and this is one thing I really like about the TASB process, every application is in the same order.
Okay.
So you're not going to look through 75 pages. About the first three pages, you're going to determine whether or not that's somebody I really want to dig deeper into, and it'll have their experience, that's one thing, that might be one that could go in looking at, where's their past experience? And let me go ahead and say this to you, if stability is important to you, regardless of whether we didn't search or not, I always say, the greatest predictor of success is past success. The greatest predictor of stability is past stability. If that's been somewhere different every two or three years, then I'm going to say everywhere I'm going. So that's just that point. But you're going to have what we call qualifications and characteristics, there's going to be six of them, and they address all the major issues that all trustees look for, and it'll be, they'll be one that addresses critical, one that addresses school finance, one that addresses accountability, one that addresses food dyspraxia, and they've got to respond to that.
Okay.
And their responses to those qualifications and characteristics will help you determine, well, that's somebody I'm interested in.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
And that's really, in my opinion, almost better than a matrix, when you read their responses to those qualifications and characteristics.
Going back to the matrix though, if we wanted to come up with a matrix, would that be something, you said you could come up with them for us, would that be included in the cost, or would that be an additional cost?
Yes, everything, I'm glad you mentioned that. Everything's included in the cost, except two things. The travel of the candidate's expense if they return back the second time, because you're inviting them back to the district, and if the board, three board members take a site visit to the candidate's home district. That's the only two things that are not included in the fee. Everything else is inside that fee. You don't get a fee and then we tag on expenses, you get the fee and that's it. And so, you know, that's, that's the way, you know, it works. We used to do a fee and they would add on expenses, and we'd say, well, expenses wouldn't be more than this and all that, but we just said, you know, let's just say, this is what we're going to do it for and be done with that type of thing. That's advertising, travels, everything, everything, except those two things I just mentioned. But yes, we create that, that doesn't cost you anything extra at all, if that's what you'd like for us to do. We're here, you're in charge of the search, we're here as consultants to help you. You know, we do this, I do this 24/7. You know, they say, well, what about when you're on vacation? I've gotten calls from board presidents while I'm even on vacation. And so, you know, we work this all the time. And so this is what our job is. Dr. Strauss, if you were ever at one of our sessions, Dr. Strauss presented with me, and, you know, she's our senior consultant, and she's, you know, she's off doing searches right now. And so she is a, you know, she's a vital part of the whole thing, but it's, unfortunately, you get to see our two faces, Dr. Strauss. So, but, you know, we would be the, we'd be the point of contact for you. But anyway, you're in charge of the search and we're here to help you and guide you. Make sure you're not getting off into the ditch or things like that, because we want to, we want to keep everybody on the straight and the narrow.
So Dr. Strauss was also at Pine Tree?
Yes.
And then there's a lot of, you go across through all the depth of TASB for resources and, and knowledge to know who you don't want, to weed out who you don't want, and not by hearsay, but by fact. And that's one thing, at the, at the meeting I was at with you and Dr. Strauss, that it's important to know upfront and not call those people here. We want to know that that's not one that, that's proper. We want to get the qualified people that want to be here, and we want them to be here. So I think that the depth of your organization is to our advantage, and I think it's to the advantage of any superintendent that puts their application in with you. It takes more time for them to fill it in, but they're willing to put it in that way so that it saves our time to review it and compare. And everybody sitting up here that's on the school board is, we're all volunteers, and we want to save our time, but make wise decisions. And that's what we're paying for you to help us to do that. And I think that there are a lot of things that I can say that are positive about this. I think I might have, oh, also in there, if there's any legal problems, you just work those out right at TASB, you don't have to use our lawyer so much. If there, if it's something that you do need to, then you'll go to her, but you can handle interdepartmental with referrals and things like that.
That is correct. We have our, my office sits right outside our legal division there at TASB, and so I have access to our legal attorneys as well as our HR services division, we're all in that one division together. So anything that has to do with the legalities of anything, or the HR side of something, we have access to all that, you know, of course, and that's, that's part of TASB, and that's part of, you know, you being our member, and we'll help you, you know, any way that we possibly can with that. And so, yes, to answer your question, and we appreciate that, that information. And one other thing that we get a question on from time to time, and I'll finish with this, is that a lot of board members says, well, I don't have time to go through 75 applicants. Well, I understand that, but the way you get the information is that the applicants are broken down by experience. So if you're a board member that says, I'm only interested in assistant supes or superintendents, I don't want to go any further, they're already broken down for you, so you don't have to go any further. So it's, everything's laid out well, so it's easy to navigate through the online system and things like that. And if you say, I'm not very good at computers, well, if you're not, then we can help, we can assist you with that as well. So it's not troubling.
Do we, it sounds like then that if you have 76 applicants, we would see all 76 applicants. Do we actually see their name and everything, or are we just seeing qualifications? Confidentiality?
You're seeing everything.
Okay.
You will, I'm, thank you for mentioning that word. You're going to sign a confidentiality agreement with us, which means that once you get the candidate's information, that you'll not disclose that to anybody until Gabriel blows his horn, and you know when that is. And so the only person that you can talk about is the person you hire, but everybody else goes away and everything like that. But we, and that's why, that's why candidates trust our system, because they know that we really hold tight to them, and they believe in that. And so they're not afraid. We've, I've had, I've run across candidates at convention all the time that say, I wouldn't apply for anybody else because I know you're not going to let my name slip out, because if I don't get it, I want to go back home, I want things to be okay back home. So yes, thank you for saying that. Mr. Neal, that's all I have.
Sir, we appreciate you, Ms. Feckler, Mr. Lee, thank you all for joining us today. Board, any other questions or comments?
Just thank you for your information. I had the opportunity to sit in your training and stuff, so I was.
Then you could have done this.
Well, I just think you covered it really well. I just like the aspect of getting school boards involved with this kind of training, because I think it's important. So it's helped me a whole lot, I know, sitting here at this, at this point, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe one.
Thank you. The board will now conducting a executive closed session, discuss the items posted on our agenda, pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act as allowed by Texas Government Code Section. as allowed by Texas Government Code Section 551.0071, 551.0072, 551.0074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in a closed meeting. In action, the board wishes to take as results discussions and closed sessions will take place after the board reconvenes the open session. It is now 2:16. Now move to closed session. Thank you.
Two fifty-eight. Boy, are there any requests for future gen. items? Thank you. Could we have our motion adjourned?
The move will adjourn.
Some move, our missus.
Second.
Second. Motion second. I want a favor sign of eye.
Aye.
All applause. We are adjourned. Thank you, boy.